We have somebody drop off with a truck in front of our house, standing around for twenty minutes, bag with his clothes, because he wasn't gonna go in there. He waited for Uber to take him. A few weeks ago, we had somebody else come to the detox house, incapable on something, went to the wrong house, really the wrong house. And ended up at gunpoint handcuffed down the beach on their property, two hours right on other property saying that the detox pulled down to watch, watch out for our street because there's a lot of cops on the streets. So now, now our security is being against us. So now, I wanna hear what I can't do about that. Does that not make it a home business? There's up to nine cars that come in or out and in the big. When I live on our, what I said like, order buyer, I forget how many, but clearly, we have much more people coming in and out. And if they're gonna jeopardize our safety like that, would they not need to provide some kind of security?
I would think so. We've been told over and over this, this, the state, the state legislature passed certain laws that allows, I understand being six in the house.
That includes staff.
Many residents.
But it's a great, well, more, I've been given debate how many people are in it. The whole situation around it, they're having, they are, there are some empty cans over the fence. These cans are stuck, they're obviously happening on them because the straws are still taped to them. This is, this is how it works. So, everything, it's like we have nothing to say about anything. I'm now told by two real owners and my friend, right? I have, if we sell a house, we most likely, they all who we told to sell it to the detox.
Oh, no.
Well, listen, I'm not, I didn't say I'm doing that. This is, this is where we're stuck and no one else cares. Because every house in plenty of these, on our street now shows the mountain detox. So while they said on Zillow, it's not gonna change what they, human, our house be worth, but you're not gonna get somebody that's gonna live in a cul-de-sac that says mountain detox, where we used to have a very desirable cul-de-sac.
Um, so, it sounds like we have a lot more people than what there's supposed to be. Which is that not only some people, it's just they do, we just don't know. So, that's the first thing I'm gonna think. And who does that? That would be county. And there's supposed to go through this whole process. So, if you, you.
I'd say like one person is it.
I could go through all of this.
If you have a line, someone, and ask them how to find me contact people like you in the active trade. Like a bar?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
All the hours of hours.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah. And there's, there's like a lightning, uh, on Friday night, it's all denying. Um, they are opening back doors for the people to walk into school.
And where, where is this?
Where is that go straight? Like, oh, sorry. There was something this morning too. It's, it's a pop.
Okay.
Can you give me the address?
Three six zero six.
Do you?
Six six zero six.
Six six.
Like in the fair.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so what we can do is, is turn it over to health departments and regional planning because they're, they're not allowed to have one, totally, that means, usually it's a fifty fifty, a one to one ratio for care numbers and residents. So, at most there should only be four guests.
I don't have, I don't have those people in and out there all day all night.
Okay.
And then we have the foster kids up on the corner, down the street. They were the detox just going through the mailbox. These are little kids, they don't know what they're doing, go through the mailbox, it's like something.
So somebody's telling them.
I just, I just. They're just not being watched, they're not being watched, but they shouldn't be anywhere near this detox. They drive like idiots, the guys are from the valley, they should be down six, down at least in circles somewhere. Am I missing anything with me?
Well, I was gonna say, the night that that person showed up, he came from Huntington Beach. Yeah, was loaded or drunk or high or whatever, got dropped off by Uber on Flare Day Way, and stumbled to the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, which was probably the worst.
Of course, that was the perfect house.
I'm surprised that he didn't go out in a tiny box because, um, cold people are retired box. And they were sleeping, it was eleven thirty at night, and this guy was trying to get into their slider. With the dark clothing on, and he had backpack, he was like the perfect perpetrator. And of course, he was out of his mind on wherever, yeah. They had him come, and at gunpoint called the sheriffs. Wow. Three cars alone. This was the beat that Sheriff Martinez was in, um, wait, actually.
So those are his steps.
This was completely, that would be his steps. Yeah, but I went online to find, if I have any kind of complaint, um, written up about that incident, high down the thing. I looked like under the, the detox house.
Is there, is there a? There's a, there's a platform. Because the detox are a couple, they got their adult five star, a couple guys, it's guys that were there from Oklahoma, that were, that made the open fence, we brought out the EPOs, that's their five star reviews. Uh, great places.
Yes, great. Did you find a platform then, where you could maybe place a statue? That this all rises to the state. I found the stage that had, like their, their registration number, facility, and I was looking to see if there were like, records under that, because usually they should be like transparency. I didn't see anything filed as a complaint from that event, and it was about three days afterward. Maybe it was too soon, I don't know. But, anyway, the guy was saying, as he was getting hooked up by the homeowner, uh, he was saying, um, uh, is this the detox house, this is the detox house? That's how they tipped them off, that they knew he meant to go to detox house, which would have been straight in, stand on another.
The doctor said, he said that they warned him, the detox warned him that they're stopped. So obviously detox knew he was coming, and he was at their house for two hours. So who's not watching? And as soon as those police cars and whatnot left, everybody in the detox got their cars and bailed. They bailed, had on just came a couple days later and nothing for two weeks. It was silent until a couple days ago, they put in the basketball court and they're all back.
It's a nightmare. Real estate planning, but I got the email almost finished. What do you know, regional planning, health department, one people, three different paragraphs, three different illegal ugly parts, as well as a bunch of illegal storage, and brought chicken to the door, made spread on a property and get a flood. So, I, I don't know what to say, we can't get county to do anything. So I promise you, I will, I will be there.
Skeletos.
And if there's a way to file a complaint, state, that, then we need to bail or something for that. I don't know, I haven't looked for that, I never thought of that.
And is there a landowner on here?
What?
Is there a landowner?
He was and he just dropped.
Consider.
Okay. I'm sure he'll be back for his report, so. It's lucky though that, that he's alive, that he was trying to, literally trying to get into a slider. You know? And he had gone, he had gone through a closed gate to get around to her, he was in the back slider.
The doctor's window was open and there was lawman along the wall.
Right.
And then after the police left, they told him that he was there on the property for over two hours. And it's gonna happen if they come on the, they come on our property.
This is eleven thirty at night. In our question, you wanted to be.
Now, that's when they, 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 they had time that place.
Oh, there must, there might be, I wasn't pressed to state law for all state views, but there might be conditions on how the house to operate. And if they don't comply with those conditions, they can't, they'll lose their license. And then when they lose their license, that goes away. So there's, there's, there's provisions in state law that they have to follow, nor even be under that places. So I, I don't, it'll be a long time since I've looked at it.
And I had to find out too about the security aspect of it. Yeah. Because they have requirements, so if you guys can help research that. Only sent this email.
Anyway. Another thing to add, you can develop. But what's interesting is that the house was not prepared to be, they knew he was coming. He should have been dropped off at their door instead of wandering. The guy that, they were just dropping off. I didn't, he would drive, probably figured he was already developing, he just jumped out. Now, I was under the impression that he was being dropped off, but he was under the age that just arrived here. Is that what you heard?
Drunk in the back of the car, and then made arrangements to the detox. And we take him there, and we'll see he was there, who were left, you know? He maybe started to put the course out policy, we sure did invite there, and there was nobody else, obviously.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, is that did the detox house know he would do, that he was coming? Why weren't they out there to meet him?
Well, they have to, they have to, they have to call them if they're ready, if they have a bed, they don't.
Maybe he said, oh, I'll be there at five o'clock, and then went on the vendor, and they gave up on him and thought he wasn't showing up. And then he showed up at eleven o'clock at night and there'd be rain whenever. And I don't know the story, but there's, I'm thinking if we can find out more details, but, um, maybe, maybe party things before the report, um, as to whether the house was suspected. Because if they, they were not out there, they reached him, if they were out there, then there's.
Well, in the house, they bring you boy.
I just wanna keep things, we can, so you finish your topic.
Okay.
Yeah. You finish up your thought.
All right.
Here.
Unless you have an answer, I'm gonna read, but no.
No, no. It was up to us to figure it out. Oh, yeah. So. So, uh, anybody else?
I don't, Hillary just walked in, so I don't know. Did you hear the announcement of its community comment thing?
Oh, no. Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, then you said.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
All right, well, I just want to leave the room. And Hillary, I'm here, the homeowner and uncle's day, and a big community supporter. And, um, I'm here because I've received text messages from the council members that my real estate structural signs, uh, are inactive or not given time, they needed to come down. Um, it was also text me, um, that my neighbors have brought up in these meetings. Since these structural signs do help our sellers, who again are also our community members, um, they're, they're permitted to, to help us. So, there's been a lot of discrepancies as to how these should be up and, and should they not be up and have been dropped. Um, on the L.A. county's website, they operate since September directional informational sign, um, for old accidents on the corporate L.A. county areas, there's a little post that I have found. Um, and so, basically, I'm just trying to find some consistent information to follow, to make sure, you know? My goal's not to not be compliant, I wanna do right by my sellers, I wanna do right by my community. It's, it's a very difficult place to be, and I feel like I'm always going wrong. And so I'm trying to think of that approach, trying to figure it out. Um, I just think we can do better. So my signs are down, it says down, um, so that I can, you know, be compliant. There's at least ten directional real estate signs, even us today, driving around.
No, there's not.
There are, we're around today, you know, okay, there's ten, at least ten. I respect you. And so, it, it's, I think it's important that we're, um, consistent and uniform or proper, right? All of us realtors, all of us community members, that whatever the rules, y'all follow it, and, and keep it consistent. And so, it's difficult when, when some don't, and then the sellers are like, hey, how come, how come they have all these signs out from my property and you don't? You say one following, what I think to be the rules, that I found on this website, and this, it's a very difficult place to be. Uh, and we're caught in the middle. And so, um, I just, this, this is not necessarily the resolution today, but I'd like to find a solution, I'd like to figure this out, find a solution for everyone. And so, um, I want to make suggestions, I'd love to hear it. Uh, that's why I'm here today.
Hillary, I'm.
I was wondering how to review because of you and another agent had your signs at the corner of Sierra Highway and Red Rover Blind Road. So parents were calling, saying, okay, and your signs are very close to the road, both of them. But we can argue with them.
I am not gonna argue with you.
I like with them, they're set way back on them.
I don't.
They're not in the right way.
I think I've done, I live on, uh, Channing over.
Yeah, and many times, that corner is completely filled with signs that I can't see down the road. You can turn around on Sierra Highway.
And ones that are slow, so it's not.
Right, and well, it's interesting, because on the website, it's on, on the county's website, you know, thirty days after selling to remove a directional sign, here it was like, it should be.
That's on, that's on council.
It, it is, it is, um, this is where it gets very confusing.
That's an MLS requirement too, that you can't just sign down. And, and you do know what the African community standards are.
I, I, I'm, that's right.
Hold on.
I think, we, we, we jeopardize this.
Yeah.
So we want to say it's important. Yeah, it is important, and I agree, we should get some.
Because we, we don't want to cause grief to the community and realtors. Our goal is not to cause more crashes, indeed, fission, that's not our goal. We're just trying to help our sellers, right? And trying to help, uh, help sell their property as community members. So yes, I think there's resolution that everyone can find, but the, the approach has been taken, you know, causing debates, you just wanna be able to put it out there and say, hey, hang on.
We, we can do that really good. Well, I think on Shannon, that, um, Shannon Valley, is there, Shannon Dale, there's one left.
Well, there sure is.
Yeah. Yeah, he is.
No, it's not a he.
There's one, there's one on Shannon.
Okay, there's one of the crops. It, it's, so fact is, I, I want us all.
Right.
Well, right, there's one on Sierra facing, you know, June or Valley, there. I, it's, it's, you know, it doesn't matter. It, it's the fact is they're there, and we need to figure it out, and it's, it's me.
And so I hope to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think we need time to look at the code and how to, because we don't almost get a straight answer out of county.
Sure, and I'm, I'm having to email all the research that I got here just to approach it.
Sure, yeah.
I think that'd be great.
The two, two, the two drivers, really, are, was the four drivers, say, on the freeway, on the highway. On the highway. But the other four drivers applies to the, not just the CSD, but what the, I don't know, coming, coming in.
Twenty two.
Exactly. Um, so we, we need to, we haven't really, we all sleep at that for about ten or fifteen years. So if that's okay, we're looking. And we're hoping we're looking at it today, if we're having so many complaints about this school, and, and there has been sent, can at least, signs that have come down, and.
Signs up from that, I totally agree with you on that, signs absolutely.
And other agents have complied, but I find it hard to believe there's still ten signs, or maybe there's some on that itself. I'm not, you're right, you're, you're. Again.
I, I was just saying, I can give you a sheet if you might.
I'll drive around tomorrow, I'm, I'm the one that's been ringing the calls. I was the one who took care of the Aspen Papadose Brokers Association for thirty years. And we did not have signs all over at the time that I was in charge of it. We do have patching in these standards, that are maybe putting the signs in a, on a road right away. And then, okay, I'm sorry, your husband's shaking his head.
I'm not, I'm, yeah, I don't. Yeah, I, I think we're, we're, but let's just stop there, we'll jeopardize it, and then we can.
Thank you for that.
More conversation, both, so, appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other, yes.
Hi, I'm trying to think what this is going on with your practice.
Well, since the last meeting, we emailed HCD, H, HCD is a state agency.
I've already emailed them.
They're going for legal.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
But then I'm comparing with other people that you're trying to take over, and then L.A. No, because the, or the property taxes are a little rare, so I'm confused. It belongs to L.A. county now?
No.
Or it still belongs to the owner, who hasn't filed the deed, or the previous owner? Or, like, what is happening? Like I said, there was like, you know, a stabbing, an assault. People are using fentanyl, the overdose deaths, um, they're driving with zero license plate, with zero insurance, with zero registration, and they're driving.
They're all behind, they're running, they're on progress, they're robbing you, or whatever.
Yes, and in fact, they're running a park where I saw them spell one of the rats to a neighbor. And the next door neighbor is providing them with electricity, it's been two years, to get their electricity turned off.
Well, it is turned off, and now.
It is turned off, but in the meantime, the neighbor, Nicholas, is renting it, and he's turning it off. So he's better.
So that's the first we heard this, so can you tell me where that justice is?
It's, it used to be part of the old trailer park until he sold it. So it's literally right next door.
It's the house directly to the west.
Yes.
So, it's, so, uh, there is, there is, there is that house on the block that is the trailer, the illegal park. Is that the, the only you've gotten with that?
No, no.
So it's the next door, is it east or west?
There's, you know, it's a one way, it's terrible, that kind of time. Sorry, I like.
It's on a corner, so it's, it's the house, if it's on.
The old street.
Yes. Right across from the community club, next door to the illegal area.
Yes, and you can see right now, he has a stadium extension board hooked up to them, providing them with electricity, and he walked by me the other day, and the stop making problems, you're gonna make me eat my meat.
Okay, well, that's, that's all, so, that's a public work thing, because state is no longer.
They won't do anything without it.
Well.
This is data health, I, it's not.
No, no, except for him bootstrapping his electricity.
Oh, yeah, that, why try?
That's a, well, we will, we will, so I, so.
And I have pictures of the board in to the.
Is it just connected to you?
Sure.
You have to sound pouncy, so.
Is it just connected to one of the? No, I think it's connected to somebody.
The Bron House does not own this.
The Bron, Eric Bron.
Oh, how, how, sorry.
I see, yeah.
Oh, really?
Eric Bron.
That's correct.
Quit playing D, and he, I think he proofed it then because he wanted everyone off his.
Yeah, yeah.
Tech.
Well, you, I mean, I can quit though, my house to you.
I know.
But if you don't want it, it's, it's, he can just make somebody's name up.
So that's where the struggle has been killing, but HCD, which I also have talked to her several times, but I can't seem to recall that, has told me that it's now going through legal.
Supposed to go to the district attorney's office.
Yes, and she said, she said, she can promise me exactly when, that she was hoping soon that maybe start movement.
They told us six months ago, it was.
Right. Yeah. So I continually call her, I left her a message, I complained again, and I showed all my different apps. I'm going online, I don't sleep all night, it's, it's.
The point was, it's here. Okay, we just so you know, there's a lot of, we've got the feds involved, we've got the state involved, violating federal statutes, a lot of problems in that place, so we're doing everything we can. For, for the motion has no power, we've got a lot going, but it's still not finished.
And why, and I have another question, why haven't the EPA not enforced for people now?
Okay, so EPA, you have to post this, whereas EPA has filed a complaint, gotten an administrative judgment against them, and their next step is to. Almost every case the EPA prosecutes, relieves, illegal cesspools, um, the property owner wants to comply, and they're meeting. Only once has it happened, and they didn't. And I have that case, so they can pursue it, and they got it fixed. So I have that case, and I need to post it on their website, to post on their website. So that certainly is the path that they will follow, that they hopefully. We've been told EPA is working with regional planning, and they are.
They're having a meeting, but hopefully even when this happens.
So you know a lot.
It's a lot of common talk, somebody that has, I'm apparently trying to move a meeting.
Yeah, gotcha.
So, we're trying.
Thank you very much. We are trying to, so, okay.
So I'd like to introduce myself, trying to, after you, I go by Hall. I'm Redditch, that street. Um, you know, I'd like to say, well, that, you know, I apologize if there's so much drama and stuff going there. Not the direction there for extremely long group time. And, uh, you know, I, I've tried to get, get anything, you know, clean them if I can. Um, I just got my toes are running, uh, so I plan on reading a lot of the junk out of there. And, you know, all the property, that, that being trailers, uh, that's really my crap.
Um, where do they go?
Um, taking them to the scrap.
Okay. We just don't want them out in the desert, it's a, it's a question.
No, I don't, um, um, so, you know, that's kind of the, you know.
So are you doing this for the property owner?
I'm just doing this because I live there, I'm fresh. But, uh, you know, I told Martinez that I was gonna do that, you know.
Is that deputy Martinez?
Yes. So, um, you know, yes, there, there was a stabbing there by one of the, the women that lived there. Um, she was rude today. I, you know, I've been trying to get her out there for the last week now, well, before that, but since, you know, she shot her husband, I've been trying to get, uh, the evidence there. I had her for the last two nights, and today, to get her. Um, excuse my voice. Um, also, you know, uh, not everybody there is, you know, a convict or a criminal. Um, being that one, you know, the Ace Hardware, uh, thing that happened, that guy's own. Um, and, because of the lady, Jamie, uh, who's back her husband, she's been, you know, a lot, uh, harmed and, you know, and. So she's on, um, as far as the guy intent, uh, I don't really know him that well. Um, but from what I understand, you know, he's, uh, you know, a EAPF contact, concrete, you know, but he's not in any legal trouble at the moment. Um, so, um, you know, I just wanna know if there's anything I can do, you know, to, to help him, you know, and clean the place up. I know that everybody's gonna be getting out of there at some point in time, I'm not sure when. But, you know, I'm, I don't wanna be, uh, you know, the one to look at, I saw a problem, because I'm not, you know, uh, so that, that's kind of where I'm at, that, um.
I, I have been established most with the convict, and not his, his material to the issue. It's illegal cesspools, that are.
Right, I understand.
Is that you've gone for them, lack of license, all of them. So when, when one person leaves, what is the entity that things arranges for the new people to come in, that beats out?
Well, uh, that I don't know, uh, I'm not sure, you know, but that I'm not really sure.
Just, like, who did you talk to?
To get it.
To get it.
Did you swoop in?
No, no, I moved in a while ago, and, uh, I came here with a guy who killed my killed, and, uh, you know, I, I didn't remember, it just was a while back. And, uh, and then, like, right after that happened, stopped coming around.
Well, that's what you told me, that you've been there like a year and a half.
Correct.
I've been trying to figure out, I've been killing, the one lady on there who's got mental issues, and I was not successful.
I was.
Obviously, and she was taken, right?
Yes, I, I literally had my coach running all night last night next to her house, um, because I walked him off that entrance, so she couldn't, you know, get out.
Three or four conversations with, with us, and. Well, thanks for coming. I'm just trying to get some help or a sort of bit.
Someone beat her face into the pipeline, and she was crying, screaming, I called, this was three months ago. I saw this, blood maddening hair, and I heard, you know, the, the one hitting with a paper. I was there, and the neighbor, you know, he should speak on Facebook, that she cried because she's hungry. I have, Jamie is not the issue here. Jamie, I felt so bad.
Yeah.
I feel bad.
I wasn't, you guys are wondering.
Okay. Uh, you know, I'm just saying, I'm not, you know, here to help, you know, anything I can to, to assist in any way. You know, I just wanna, you know, that, that I'm not here to, you know, in, in one of, 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 you should, you. Uh, I, you know, I've been here for a while, I need to put a, a different property. Uh, I, you know, I've been here for a while, I'm a different property, um, you know, and, uh, so I, I ask you. So, um, you know, anything I can do, you know, in, in the interest, I'm willing. And, uh, as far as, you know, stuff that goes on in that area of art, I, I don't enjoy it, irritate. No, you're, no, yeah. Um, so, you know, like I said, I, I'm planning on, you know, you know, trying to get some of that trash out of there. And, uh, and anything up to, I, I just know that, you know, that other, I know there's people that, that have problems, like, and I, I think it, it's definitely.
It, it, it's a, it needs to go, disappear.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. And I knew that this comment.
I would just ask that, I mean, there's other neighbors, I'm not gonna say any, that have thrown nails in, uh, you know, in the driveway to prevent, uh, people from driving, uh, they jaded the signs down that are put, need to put there. Um, we have some videos as well, but that's in the here and there, I'm just wanting to be known that, that, you know, if somebody was ever come and say, hey, Ross, you know, like, like you did yourself, you know, that's a better, you know, way.
Hey, Ross, turn on the fucking generator. Is the toilet flooding our groundwater? Hey, Ross, let me bring the big house, if you want it on the street, take it away. Hey, Ross, you promised me a perfect turn on it, I need it to be out.
Okay, so.
I, I have no, you know, I'm, I'm just, that I was, I was hitting on that notice, is, you know.
All right, thank you.
You put coming in.
All right. Do you have a recording?
Do you have a training for music?
We used to read the. I have a quick question, so you paid rent to somebody, said, the one time, you never paid them rent again?
Yeah.
You don't have his contact information or anything?
I did, uh, I, somewhere, I couldn't find the lease cover that he wrote up for. Um, he just literally wiped off the face of earth. I know that it was somewhere in, somewhere near, you know, where he lived somewhere in San Antonio, faster. He would help, uh, you know, pay on, like, whatever month, and then, but, never. That's, yeah. All right, we're in line, uh, any other comments? Oh, yes, we do.
Any quick question? Community comment as a community member. So, my daughter and her husband are printing on a block for my granddaughter, who has Asian ed disorder called pit pumpkins. And I have a flyer about it, it's going to be on June 7th at the park. And you can, I'm gonna set the flyer up, anybody who's interested in coming, you can put their up on walkinggoodfabric.com, and you can, iTickets, donate, do, come. I really just want to be there. Yes, please. Okay. Put this up over here.
Could you, um, could you set this up?
If you don't, I hope they can post it on my website.
I'll put it in.
Yeah, I'll send it. Everyone's.
She does, she has it on.
Maybe you want to. All right, well, I'll send off the announcements first, but, um, we received the following, we, we, we need to come council first, thank you for all you done. For the town, we have to, after all of your work, the act of April 4th, July, depending on the honor you had, or April 4th, July, or this year, as a grant market. We cannot see anymore, because if you go to our, to the law celebration, for a time.
I'm gonna go by this.
Well, all you forgot to. So we'll get back to announcements, which you said, we have.
Uh, Jim, library. Um, so I'll just mention a few of the upcoming programs I've got, I got, um, just coming up, just a couple days, Thursday, May 8th at 3:30. We've got someone coming to talk about Japanese folk lovers using the art of shadowing other groups. And then afterward, they're gonna be making shadow puppets to be able to, and teach, it's all about the, the history of it and all of that. So that should be a good one. Um, another one I've got coming up is, I'm also having, uh, Saturday, May 24th, at 2:00, running a Chinese culinary workshop. So, yeah, um, we're expecting you to be able to, like, write out your notes for the next.
Soon I can, please.
Um, but no, she can really, there's just something here, and she'll do a, a pop pot. Real nice. Uh, again, that's Saturday, the 24th, 2:00. Um, like always, all of our stuff is online, um, under the events tab. So, I'll make another, you know, every two months, I remind you guys, I have COVID tests and, and 95 masks, just free to whoever, either for whatever reason. But we can grab one on your way up. Other than that, there's just, you know, a holiday so there will be closed on Monday, the 26th, for Memorial Day. And, that's all I've got, unless you guys have questions for me.
Do, okay, I've got another question, do you guys carry a Narcan here?
Not at this branch.
So it's a light.
A light pack's a one, and I don't know how often they're doing the distribution on the Narcan.
Okay, just because it expires.
Yeah, no, it, it don't.
And we picked up last time, we set this up.
Yeah.
Because we never know what we're picking up, and we, we come across $10 or something, and we need Narcan.
Is your, is your batch expired?
Not yet, but it's getting close.
Okay, let me, uh, I'll reach out to John and see if they're still doing distribution events.
Okay.
I know one thing they tell us, I mean, I do have Narcan here, but not for distribution.
Right, right.
And they tell us, oh, even if it's expired, keep it as expired.
Then that's what we figured.
No, no.
So they get two ghosts to level them on. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll look at, I'll, I'll let you know if they're still doing good.
Okay, because I know I'm only the one, yes, but like I said, we probably have a couple months left, um, before it expires. And then when he said it doesn't really expire, it's just, I mean, you do stuff, but I'm somewhat caught about it.
I'll let you know that.
Well, we're doing special, are you?
Yeah, I. I know.
Was something you said go?
Oh, no, I, I, I didn't move back, it's like, but I just wanted. All right, so a couple things, uh, here it is, we're discussing the bean subdivision that we reviewed last year. We got an email about, about it, so they saw, goes post, here is posting, so just want to let people know, that was a, uh, tentative or, well, a parcel, some of it split into three lots, um, they did provide, or they said they would agree to provide a trail out of the middle of the hearing, to check, make sure that trail is on there. Two subdivision applications were submitted to regional planning last week, one is, uh, to split a five acre lot, two, the property has an RL2 land use designation, so it would comply with that subdivision. However, the others split a six acre property into six lots, that property has an RL2 land use designation, and H2, they'll need destination. So they won't be able to provide, that means two, two lot, two acre lots in one, so they probably can get three parcels, but not six. Um, the proposed monastery out on the recent canyon is now moving forward with its SCA review. Um, because regional planning is no longer sharing the information about proposed development projects enacted, we are now forced to use the records access mechanism from the Public Records Act. Um, so last week we submitted 23 Public Records Act requests, because there've been so many new changes, storage projects, commercial developments, and recreational developments. Uh, regional planning has also changed another policy, and now part of it's the public monitoring one stop meetings between developers and county representatives. They're claiming that's because of SB 330, but SB 330 only applies to subdivisions, and not CEP variants, and that involves SCA meetings and things like that. So, for some reason, regional planning has basically dropped the curve again on everything. It will give us information, it won't let us monitor anything, and transparency is, is better, something in history, doesn't exist anymore. The county's Department of Economic Activity has created a grant program to help support and expand sidewalk vending operations for starts and food stamps. Yep, uh, now some good news, the Rock Straight Stumble Trail is now open to connect hikers and pedestrians to trails in the Andalus Forest on Rock Street Canyon Road. The trail line that ride has been arranged by Parks Department for May 17th, 9:00 AM, please, um, we have a flyer.
It's posted.
It, it's posted, so please join us, and, um, it's gonna be great, I think a lot of pedestrians will be there, a lot of people, community members will be there, and parks will be there, snacks will be provided, so it's, we do. LA County Fire Department is setting up a special girls' fire camp day on June 7th. The event is open to girls ages nine to seventeen, signups begin on May 1st. We posted the flyer on our website, if you're interested, we'll pull it into the school as well. Um, as part of the Vision Zero effort, Public Works is launching a new rural roadway safety plan for unincorporated communities in the Antelope Valley. A key element of this effort is to engage youth on traffic safety, to understand their concerns, and develop conceptual plans to address them. Public Works, it'll be here at our next meeting to address this program and get input, so that's good. On May 13th at 6:00 PM, there will be a meeting of the Illegal Development Task Force, in which Kelly's side will be present, it's an in-person meeting, also zoom in. Um, that we discuss some of the new regulatory updates, and combat all the illegal building going on in Antelope Valley. Um, if you're interested in attending, please see the information posted on the website. But unfortunately, on that same day, the Department of Regional Planning has scheduled a renewable energy reception meeting on May 4th at 7:00 PM. It's really kind of annoying that they did this, because it is, the two issues that are really important in the Antelope Valley today are renewable energy and illegal building, and now we have to choose which one to adopt. So, I, I emailed Chuck about that, and the Association of Rural Town Councils, and suggested that maybe regional planning should convene a second REOP just for the Antelope Valley, because of this. Um, that see, we received communications from residents regarding illegal non-permanent RV parks, and storage in town, and places. One location on Sierra Highway has at least, uh, four, four, instead of water, electricity, and, you know, four body. Uh, more than a month ago, we received the de-nom regional planning statement that they thought this year was all a little wondering. Another location on Sierra Highway, Red Rover, advertised restoring RVs without permits. Two other locations on this, we don't have a lot, but basically are, are meetups, we'll just set up and move it down. Residential RV camps, not temporary. Also, the county continues to host community listening sessions, providing opportunities to share relevant experiences and ideas for enhancing county services and ensuring inclusivity and transparency. There are two more virtual meetings on May 6th and, uh, May 8th, if you're interested, please see the flyer, it's posted on the website. Uh, Public Works will be initiating efforts to remove diseased or dark trees in the Antelope Valley. And then there are three trees that will be removed, uh, one is on Ohio Street, one's on, or two, three locations, Ohio Street, Canyon Road, and Vital Path Drive. And finally, uh, accounting has partnered with financial literacy organizations and arranged three classes for understanding money. If you're interested in, and there's no income, and some requires, open everybody, uh, we have a flyer that on the website. That's it.
We will launch a representative update, so don't save it here, shall we? Don't we see, yeah, any of the, um.
About that.
Uh, okay. Oh, maybe. Who's starting to hear her, so go ahead.
I'm excited.
Hi, Tanya.
Hi, Shannon.
Hi, guys, uh, I'm Shannon, here at the Department of Public Works Office, this is my first meeting here, so, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to introduce myself and say that if you ever need anything, I am the field representative for the Act of Public Service, we are down to Grandon Hills. But if you live a little bit further into Antelope Valley, you have another field representative who takes over that region, her name is Jasmine Hernandez. Uh, another announcement is that we just had our ventrises on color board, bringing in Victoria Garcia. So if you are veteran, or you don't have any veterans, we're gonna get help with the services, she is kind of the direct VA lead officer there. So I'm happy to give you her information, my information, I'm a QR, I don't have a business code, uh, a business card, so if you scan that, I can help you do that. Um, if you ever need any help with any federal agencies, social security, anything along those lines, Medicare, um, just let me, and I'm happy to help. Um, separate announcement for high schools, and we'll be going to the high schools and middle schools to talk about this, but our app challenge just launched on May 1st. That's not due till October 30th, but this is not something you can really do over time, although most of our submissions are submitted in the last six hours before the deadline. Um, but it's anything that requires coding at all for any student, middle school or high school age, that's sixth grade up, they can submit it to us, send a little video and explaining how it works, and the judging will happen in November. We've just imposed our art competition, but it's never too soon to start. Uh, for next year's art competition, the winner gets their art hung in Happy Hill, first place, uh, that's not first place, second place is hung our DC office, third place is hung in the office that I work in, which is our district office in Santa Clarita Offspring Road, and fourth place will be in the Palm Hill office. So if that's closer to you, go ahead and check it out, and that'll be hung up within the next week or so. Uh, if you ever need anything, don't hesitate to call, if you're calling Palm Hill, you'll probably get, uh, a woman named Giselle Francis, our amazing case worker, who's been doing it as long as I've been alive. So if you're gonna be hopeful, she probably gonna be able to do it, or Jasmine, our field representative for AV. If you call the Santa Clarita office, it's more than likely that I will be picking up the phone. So never hesitate to call, go call the state, or connect you to the right state or county, um, agency, representative, if, if it's really, um, an issue on that level. So again, happy to hand out my information as you guys need, but again, I'm Shannon, nice to meet you.
So, so last year, first place went to a mess, it's high school.
Yeah.
Which we have to say.
Yeah.
Um, and I tried to forward this thing, we, we have one, and send it, and I'll make sure you want it at the school this year, yes, or you probably already sent it to her, so.
We would be more than happy, you know, as many people as we can get as possible.
Yeah.
Because we want to make sure that every kid who wants to participate can, and also, it's anything that has to do with coding, so it could be like a medical device, it doesn't just have to be an app, so it's pretty broad. Um, you know, there are a lot of things that people may spend, so, happy to send you.
And then there's just one last thing, something I mentioned at the RTC meeting last week, and I think we'd like to start, maybe have this conversation with the congressman, or do with the staff, about energy resiliency and energy safety and energy, um, energy pulse. Um, because in a way, state and the county and the federal government are going to be just trying to achieve our green energy goals. There's two ways to do it, there's the worst way, and then there's the best way, and probably the worst way, so it's making our energy infrastructure very vulnerable. Um, so I, I wouldn't have started that conversation, but, you know, we've been talking about it for years, and so we can have a discussion with, and, uh, White Side sort of staff. And we had a, we made a presentation just a week ago to county, county executives on the Air County Energy Falls, trying to articulate these concerns. And we can have, we can have the same thing, have the same kind of conversation with you, and see what, what, how many, how, how we can change. You know, it's not too late, it's getting, you know, it's not there yet, so.
We'd love to see that presentation, but I'll give you the information, and if you have my email on that.
It's all ATC, so, yeah.
That we have.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, so if you're bringing you to a meeting, we're making, um, on how to facilitate a meeting, if you don't come, then, then vice versa, our district department.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you, very much.
Any questions?
Thanks for coming.
All right, Mr. Taylor, you're up. You go ahead, uh, oh, is that I'm gonna get? Okay. I guess we can actually, we don't have to use sign language tonight, we can, uh. Go ahead and try now.
There I go. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep, thanks.
Uh, my name is Tanya McHale, nice to meet all of you, I work in Senator Suzette Valaderas's office, out of the Santa Clarita Valley. Um, I work in the city hall building, and like Shannon, we are here to help you with any state services that you may need, she's on the federal side, we're on the state side. So if there's any assistance you need with a DMV office, EDD, something like that, um, you can always reach out to me. I wanted to put my email in the chat, but doesn't look like I have access to the chat, so I know Jackie, you have my email. Um, you can feel free to share that with everyone. I did want to give an update on a couple. I did wanna give an update on a couple legislative bills that Senator's working on. I know that Thomas out of our V, our AV office has previously done the ledge updates. So I know he went over this with you at the last meeting. A couple of things we're, Senator's working on. The first one is called SB 23, it's the Home for Heroes Act. This is a great win. We're combining it with Senator Archuleta with his bill SB 296. So what this is, this bill aims to entirely exempt primary residences of 100% disabled veterans from property tax. And it also provides unmarried surviving spouses same exemption for the amount entitled to if the veteran were alive and met the required conditions. So what happened with this was it passed the Senate Review and Taxation Committee with a 5-0 vote on March 12th. And then it also passed the Senate Military and Veterans Affairs Committee on April 28th. That passed four to zero, and it's next up going to hearing on the 12th of this month. So we're hopeful for that. The next one, the Senator is also co-authoring, it's actually SB 712, and that would exempt any kind of smog check on collector cars or model cars that are 35 years or older from the state smog check law. And that actually passed in the Transportation Committee 12 to 2. So right now, it's placed on the appropriation file to go to the next step. So that was also a win. Another bill she's co-authored is SB 1, and that would exempt military retirement pay from personal income taxes. That's already passed the Senate Review and Taxation Committee 5-0, and it also passed Senate Military and Veteran Affairs on April 24th, and that passed four to zero. And that's going to appropriations on the 12th. So I know the one Jackie that wanted us to talk about was SB 252, and that is the undergroundling of power lines, which I know affects Acton and Aquabowl State. And so what this bill is, this bill would help speed up utility lining underground projects by exempting them from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. And the Senator has decided to make this a two-year bill, so it's not gonna be heard in committee until January of 2026. The reason that she did that is it's gonna give us time to work with stakeholders to draft the most meaningful language possible, so we can have a chance to receive enough votes to pass it out to the policy committee. So this is an important one, because I know it affects the residents, and it would really help all of the emergency shut offs and everything that's happening out there. So we really want this to pass. You can feel free to send us support letters in the meantime. Anything you wanna contribute to that, I'm happy to send that to your ledge team in Sacramento. Other than that, I think it's pretty much what Thomas had talked about prior. Senator's working on some great things, and we'll see. I hope it all goes good. Do you have any questions for me?
I've got, yeah. Recently, Senator Valderas co-chairs the Environmental Quality Committee, and they heard 607, and it passed with a 5-0, I think it was 5-0, there was a couple absences on that vote, but it passed unanimously, the state was there. And my concern, and I have written to Senator Valderas about this, my concern is that I understand that wanting to streamline and facilitate approvals, I understand that everything's moving fast, they wanna get it done, cut some of the red tape, but they lumped clean energy projects into the qualifying projects that would be able to go through a streamlined, fast-tracked CEQA approval. And while there are projects that I'm sure would be fine for that, living-based battery energy storage should not be lumped into that headboard, because there's no way that a project that poses the risks going to fire and health toxicity, that that shouldn't be given any kind of fast-track, streamlined CEQA anything. So I wrote to Senator Valderas about that, I have not heard back from her yet, but I reply her reassurances that projects such as that would not be afforded that same luxury as, let's say, another clean energy project that didn't pose the risks.
Right.
Like another technology that didn't have the risks.
Right. Um, yes, we, I believe that's the letter that, is that the one that you sent me on the 30th?
No, that was 941, SB 941.
That was it.
AB 941.
That was AB 941. When did you send the 607?
Oh, that would be, she got, that's me. She's, I sent that letter right after her vote, so the vote was on Tuesday, I sent it on, I think, Wednesday.
Okay. So if you wanna send me also a copy of that letter, I'll make sure that I send it up to the team up in Sacramento, too, so you can have that copy of that as well. So if you wanna mail that to me, and I will share what we talked about as well with our director, too.
Ruthie's, she's not on the town council, but she is on our Energy Committee for Utilities Committee, you know, the town council has several committees, and she's like the main person on that committee, so, but she, she, but I'm thinking maybe, because we did write, we weren't in opposition necessarily to 941, we were just concerned about implications and maybe the expediting CEQA review for mission project that Cal ISO approves. And then our concern is that, you know, six months ago, Cal ISO announced they were looking to approving $70 billion in new transmission stuff over the next, I mean, 15 whatever years. And all of that has been paid for by us, so our rates will probably, my guess, is triple in the next 15 years. So, you know, and nothing, it kind of dovetails into the comments I made about energy policy and how we're doing this. So, you know, that's kind of the conversation we're gonna have. Now, I had a question on SB 20, 252, which is, sounds like a great, great, it's a great legislation. In other, you know, we've been participating in the town council on a number of proceedings with PUC, and we've partnered with other organizations, and one of them being the Anza Borrego Foundation, one of them being Center for Biological Diversity, and they have expressed some concerns with some of the new legislation, I don't think it's this one, regarding undergrounding. So I had a question, because obviously, there's no, I can't imagine anybody in this world would oppose the undergrounding of distribution lines, subtransmission lines, or transmission lines, if that, if that activity, and it should be exempt, if that activity's been done to take existing lines and put them underground. But I think what the CBD and Anza Borrego Foundation and we have talked about, probably something on this, on the council, would be concerned about expediting, or is exempting for CEQA underground transmission lines for new transmission lines in new rights of plan. So do you know if the 252 is for undergrounding existing only, or does it rotate to new as well?
You know, I don't, well.
Because I think what, because I'm the chair for the Utilities Committee, what we'll have to do is, is, you know, take a position on it, we vote on it, we write, we agree to sign the letter, and so we could agendaize it for an upcoming meeting to write a letter supporting it. It sounds like something we talked about in the past, so it'd be great. But if we could, and you sent email to ATC and everything, the council, everybody sees it, so it's not just to me, but we all get it. I'm just, I'm the correspondent secretary, so I will respond to it. But, so if you could forward what information, maybe you already have, forward information you have on that, if you could agendaize it for future meetings.
Sure.
Decision, because that sounds good.
I can do that. We'll send that out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
And thank you to Senator Valderas for hitting the ground running. This is, she's got a lot of things going on.
Yeah, she does. She is working on a lot, so, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
How do we get her email? You know, see if they put it in the chat now.
Okay, let me try. Yep, I'm gonna put it right now.
Thank you.
I have access. All right, there's my email. Yeah, so feel free to reach out. I'll also put my local phone number as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Debbie Martinez. Are you there, Debbie Martinez?
Yes.
All right, we will come back. If you hear us and you're having trouble, um...
I'm just gonna take it.
This is so much, I'm getting on my...
Yeah, I think it worked out.
Your mic should be on, Debbie Martinez. Okay.
Maybe he's got this.
Okay.
Wow. We're not in the meeting.
I know, I need to wash my shower. Yeah. Okay, move on.
Wait, hold on one second. I forgot an announcement, it was down there. We received, I, one more announcement, I apologize, it just came in, and I'm here and I left it there, so. This is a resident who has expressed a lot, is expressing a lot of frustration and outrage about neighbors who didn't choose Sierra Highway, we talked about it a lot, between 4:00 and 7:00 in the morning, and 4:00 and 6:30 in the morning, that too-lane Sierra Highway becomes a formerly free bank, and people gather just to do crazy things. So, and most of the people who live here, so I, I don't know if I can...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
But...
If we're putting one announcement, then Debbie Martinez, then we will...
But it is important for people to know that our next town council meeting is where Public Works will be here, to talk to the community about public safety and what we can learn from, to protect our communities and stuff like this. So if anybody knows this person, we will reach out to them, or if there's a phone call, I want to say that, I don't know if it's my initial letter, but, so, please come to the next meeting in June 7th.
Are they going to put it in the stop sign or the...
That's already been in there. Yeah.
We're waiting for that to happen.
Right, and then we're supposed to get stops on Sierra and Red Rover.
And where?
Red Rover.
Yep.
There's some way in there for sure, it's one of the old...
So we'll just sit there for the first month and just watch people run?
Well, it's like this, but then also, they're, they're understanding, uh, Sierra and Chantilly.
Oh, awesome. Oh, and then the more we stop possibly?
Yeah, we've been asking.
Sorry, wait a minute.
Yeah. Oh, that's weird.
If you're stopping at the door, it's where they get a lot of, you're in there. So, so hopefully it's a little, it does, it is like...
That would really slow things down.
Well, we've, there's times, there's no stop sign from that, yes.
Right.
To ground.
Right.
So once you've been going away into the, it's just, it's, you know, south of the morning bad, north of the east.
Ten years, you know, stop sign of Red Rover. Ten years. Wow.
How many stops did it go, slide?
So you need one more. The velocity was completely, really cinched it up.
I'm hoping that... You know, some of this letter complaints about, right, so, I don't even quite think this is going on, yeah, is that, you know, it's become an additional thoroughfare, it's because they're such huge stretches, you're going to get up to highway speed.
Ninety.
Yeah, quicker, yeah. So hopefully that will, although at the same time, it gets back to Fort Smith and our friends in T H P, which have been, that's been the joy, because...
It's so bad on Sierra Highway, especially in the evenings. My husband absolutely refuses now, you know, driving on Sierra Highway, because he's had, I can't say, you know, a lot of errors, calls.
Close calls, somebody passing.
Yeah, well, what happens is the car stops, well, they're slowing down, and then somebody decides they're gonna go around a little.
I'll sit on the green light, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Debbie Martinez, you're up.
Okay, you guys can hear me now, right?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, before I get started with my stats, Tanya, I wanted to comment on the power lines. Make sure that on the verbiage, on whatever bill gets passed, it's currently what's happened with the Palisades, I'm talking to all the Edison guys, because of all the infrastructure gone and all the homes gone and everything, they are only able to replace the power poles above ground, because that's what the feds will pay for. So whatever was there, wherever they were, even if it was poor placement, that's where they have to put them back, they can't modify it at all, which I thought was kind of asinine and short-sighted, basically having an opportunity that everything's gone, this is the time to put things underground and we can't even do it. So just something to think about for future legislation.
I'll definitely take note of that and take, send it to the Senator, that's a good point, and see what she has to say about that. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe Congressman, too, because it's...
So for the month of April, we have one Part 1 crime, which brings our grand total for the year to one, and we had six property crimes, which brings it to 25, and that's a 13% reduction in crime year over year from last year. I'm, I, I don't know if you guys have put the letters of agencies on the website yet? If not, I'll email you guys another copy. Those are only good for one year, so if you have a vacant lot somewhere enacting, please get them to us and then email them to me, and keep them up. That's how we're getting rid of all the RVs over on Antelope Valley and all that stuff, it's trespassing. So we're able to, to kind of like taper down a lot of the stuff where, where people are doing their week out from, from Thousand Trails. You guys got anything for me?
No, if you can say that, that would be great, but on that, yeah.
When, I, I looked into all the background, this letter that you can see and everything, and I can't find anywhere in statute or regulations that they're only good for a year. So why do they keep expiring after a year?
That's a, I don't know if that's a Sheriff's Department policy, probably because of liability, because if we get into use of force, I'm sure that, I'm sure they wanna be like, well, is the, is the victim still desirous? So if they set up some sort of timeline, I just know that on my end, they're only good for a year. And I guarantee it's risk management related, because if we get into shooting with someone over trespassing or use of force, and it's great bodily injury, when it goes to court, they're gonna, and then the victim goes, well, I don't even care about that anymore. It's been years since I've thought about that property, then that's gonna come up, I'm sure, as an issue. And that's probably why they say, okay, every year, we throw this out there, and then we can, we can, they say, yes, the victim's still desirous, and I want them to, to enforce it on my behalf.
So then I have a, if it's, if it's a Sheriff's Department policy, that's fine, but I have a request, it may be wrong with Julie, because I worked pretty hard to get those, the folks along Antelope Woods to sign. One of them, they're in Belloc or somewhere, St. Louis, basically, and so, and it took me a lot of time to, you know, run that to ground. So when do they expire? Does the Sheriff's Department reach out to the person who signed, or do I have to go try to find their contacts again, or do you, are you guys proactive when they expire?
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I am, I try to, like, obviously, there's gonna be some ones, but the main ones that I constantly use, I reach out to them.
Thank you, because otherwise it's just, it's a...
It's a full-time job, yeah.
Yep, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Just on that contract that they're signing, can they write on there, it's good for five years, or can it be amended?
Well, that's a...
No, it, it's, I mean, that, with our use of force, how we are being just bombarded, even though we're within policy, within state, within federal law, and we're still, you know, getting guys, you guys know very well, like Trevor Kurt, you know, still getting prison time for literally doing anything by policy, they're, they're not gonna wiggle room it right now, this is not a good time for our use of force kind of stuff.
Thank you, Debbie Martinez. All right. Nancy.
About here.
Okay.
Oh, here. You have it set.
Okay.
She went, I'm not saying she had to go out of town.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
No, it's okay, um, I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah.
So we will...
Well, okay, so, but I do, I do some...
Well, okay, so we have, I do some parts because we, you know, we reach out to parts directly because no unincorporated areas in Antelope Valley are getting anything under the measuring lines or spending money. And all, despite what they said about measuring, the blast grant program was like maybe sixteen billion dollars. More than half of it went to areas that have no partings. They went to affluent areas, they went to places that didn't have partings, and none of it went to unincorporated Antelope Valley. And we put it out time and again that the ratio of pools to people in urban, like East LA, unincorporated areas, East LA is unincorporated areas, not part of LA. They get, there's one pool for twenty thousand people. In the Antelope Valley, for rural unincorporated, there's one pool for like seventy thousand. We have a group running that we could, you know, work on that. And one of the other issues that really need to address parts, there's never any parks down, events down there because insurance costs too much. And so the Parks Department doesn't do anything. They do, they have these three months, they have all kinds of stuff and all these parks all over. But nothing here. And so, well, they've been working on trying to give the, to give the insurance way for neighbors and working with Chuck, we've got Chuck working and Nancy's been working on it. And, but I can tell you, she called on the insurance that they use and for the many dollars that she needed, plus the two lingering of extra.
Liability.
Yes, it was a hundred dollars. For nine to eleven thirty.
But then what happens when not everybody needs to look for it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
But that was the date. They, the liability, I mean, the company, the date, they didn't take the time.
Well, that's not something that happened.
Heard that.
Yes, we didn't think of that.
So we didn't really think of that.
Did she have this type of thing?
Do we? Yes.
Okay, so I wonder that.
Non-problem, it's.
Corporation.
A daughter.
So it's a person.
So that might be different.
This is a law, right?
Right.
You want my workers' way.
And she's, and she's not taking any money. When you go on to the website, you will, your money will go straight to the income. It is not, because she never sees that, she never sees that.
So they're gonna take that.
Yeah, and if you, so all I know is it's a terrible thing and we don't have movie nights. And we don't have pumpkin pie, pumpkin, you know, February nights, we don't have Christmas celebration.
I tried, I was gonna meet three economists with the friends of Acton Park, put it around. The next year, they moved the original campaign, they recommended that I talk to someone. I tried to book the date for the Caroling, the Caroling Devil Month. I couldn't do it. I showed up on the day to take a walk around, it's hard, there was nothing happening. We wouldn't have done it. Obviously, our team, our own charge is free, we put it on, we need to be loved it.
Oh, yeah.
We were so bad to not be able to do it the next year that it just got harder and harder. But we'd love to bring it back. So all our, we'd love to bring it back, we all have time.
So we can get somebody in our Parks Committee, I'm not even sure, but nobody, nobody's in the group. But if we keep, and it doesn't have to be part of the council. The most fine is a separate group, right?
Well, right, so I'm, there is a group that started in town to gather volunteers for things.
Okay. Recontile all of those instances with local wind data, local, uh, uh, meteorological data. And then pinpoint when the power shut offs happen, what the wind speeds were like at the time. We know what the wind thresholds are that F is supposed to use to cut off power. And we show that every single power shut off was unwarranted, unreasonable, there was no, the FBI thresholds were triggered, wind thresholds weren't triggered, everything they did was unreasonable. On top of that, we also collected all the data, all the wind, all the wind data from the Edison wind towers, the wind stations that are actually on transmission lines. And we found that for the transmission lines on, on, on grid lines, the wind speeds exceeded the GEO ninety-five thresholds. So they should have been shut off, but they were not shut off. Because Edison will not shut off transmission lines, Edison will only de-energize distribution lines. So that's because they don't want everybody in LA. So everybody knows that there's nineteen, there are nineteen high voltage, two thirty five hundred K transmission lines, one three eighty one. As far as I can tell, Acton's the only community in the entire state, probably the country, that has so many high voltage power lines dominating in our community and also the very high fire hazard area. Might not most turbid anymore, but also the very high fire hazard area. So it's not just troubling that they de-energize our power for no reason, right? According to all standards. It's just as troubling that they don't de-energize transmission lines when winds warranted. Because it's not just the Eden Fire that was caused by the transmission line or not de-energized certain points. There was the Genny Fire, that was, there was the Savage Reach Fire. Savage Reach Fire is unique because that transmission line, that Savage Reach Fire was in nineteen ninety in Silmar. That transmission, the tower failed, was built in nineteen seventy. What happened is it, they called it, I don't know, basically a connector for the insulators, well, it was bolted and it broke. And so the insulator fell down on the tower and so it slid and broke. Mine coming out of the tower, it's short, all of that, and they were quite destroyed. So, and if you read the post event report from both the Public Utilities Commission and LA City Attorney Department, I have both of those reports. The, the, the park, it was supposed to last, and it didn't even last, right? It was built in seventy, it didn't last six years, it was built in seventy. And the corrosion occurred from the inside, so you couldn't tell from the outside of the problem, it was only on the inside. So all of these inspections that have been done, visually, it drove, and you can't see it on the inside. So the problem is, transmission lines in our town, still the fifties, and see, some of them were new, some of them were just built ten years ago. It would drive through six, like this, three, eight, three months. But that's these, and despite the, the freedom of line, three of nineteen miles, I mean Edison, they're L E D. And there's the, the main power source, and that's why, that's why LA's, LA's and LA's, Edison's and L E D's, all of LA counties, Berks County, their energy source is very, very vulnerable. At any rate, so there's two problems. There's the de-energizing our distribution lines and not de-energizing our transmission lines. So the PUC has set up this whole process where the, the safety, safety and energy, safety, the S E D, within the PUC, reviews P S P S reports and only checks to see if the actions complied with the guidelines, okay? They never check to see if the shut off decision is what's called reasonable. And that term is really important because in the Public Utilities Code, the actual statute that directs Public Utilities Commission, it says that utilities are supposed to provide reasonable power and reasonable rates. They use that word, use that word reasonable, the word reasonable support. And as the word we use in twenty twenty-one, we filed a complaint against Edison, Edison, for all of their other activity, they were very problematic. And the judge agreed, that what Edison did was not reasonable, so we had a whole complaint proceeding, which only just ended today, third time's a Friday. That's over. So now we have no more complaints pending for the PUC. But the, the S E D does not look at the reasonableness of, of Edison's decision to cut out. That was a big fight in the proceedings, and we were a big part of that fight, us and Mussy Gray, there's two of us who really tried this, like, you need to establish, you need to start looking at the reasonableness of these decisions, not whether they, oh, did they comply with the notification? Did they comply with the outreach? Did they comply? No, that's just mechanics. Were, were, they didn't, they don't give a darn if they didn't do the six notifications that they were supposed to, or they only did four. That's, our rights are affected by the power shut offs themselves, and where are those decisions then from? So we did an analysis of the first round, P S P S in January, had submitted two separate comments and extensive comments showing that it was completely unleastful. The problem is that the commission won't, the commission will never look at the reasonableness of their activities unless they, on their own motion, decide to. Or, well, that's it, and they never have, they never will. So one opportunity that we have to raise this as an issue is to file another complaint alleging Edison did not provide reasonable, you know, comply with, I think it's section four fifty-one of Public Utilities Code, providing reasonable electricity, reasonable service. And it's gonna be a long, hard road to hoe, but somehow, because the, for, for six years, one of those years, twenty nineteen, has refused to look at this, but this power shutdowns. So, and, and the FERC can't get involved, you can't go to the feds because FERC has no jurisdiction over distribution, they only have jurisdiction over transportation. So anyway, that's something that I wanted, I put it past, put on the agenda to talk about what we can do about. That's a lot of words, I don't know. Like you said, it's overwhelming to start.
But it's a job, they just make a hoop laughing at us, it's just like.
Well, to give you an idea how bad they are, I found that when this was happening in January, they publicized a community center where you could go, like, we're offering food, we're offering, so beginning of the free publicity, look like they're reaching out. So I went there and you got a table with two people sitting and just a few boxes on the wall, and that's it. They had a, they go, oh, here, we have coupons for local fast food places where you can eat because our electricity is now off three, four days. Two hundred are outdated. They offered me an electric light bulb, a chargeable light bulb, that was uncharged. And so how am I gonna charge you when I don't have electricity? They, water, I have three horses, two of them are very large eighteen hundred pack horses. I have three dogs and five acres, they offer me a gallon of water. Here's a jug of water. And yet they're taking all the publicity, but the best one of all is they turn off my electricity because of fire and the danger of fire and no wind. What are these companies, oh, on your way out, we have free firewood you can use. Oh, I'm going to my, yeah, I'm sure you gotta have a picture of it. So I'm gonna go to my backyard, put it in my, one thing could never fly. I mean, and yet Southern California Edison is taking free publicity and showing them how they're reaching out to the community and helping them. And they're our friends, and they're not, is that they're, we should make them do the real work, make them pay for this. Have coupons, have food, they bring in a food truck, bring in a water truck, that would be a gallon and gallon of water. You know, until they have to pay, that's the only way they'll, they'll be quite, because when they shut off my electricity, all three times they did that, I'm thinking, the wind had died down from its source. There was not smoke or fire anywhere near active. One was the Eden Fire started and two hours later, it was turned off. And the other one was another fire, so I can't lose one in, of the one-on-one. But they, they, I asked, I go, who makes these decisions to shut off? Is it your scientists or is it your lawyers? And we know it's the lawyers.
Ms. McTell, do you have a question?
I was just gonna mention, the Senator's been very vocal about the P S P S and that's one of the reasons that she's really wanting to pass S B two fifty-two because it would eliminate in the future, you know, like ninety percent of these problems with the electricity being shut off. So it is something that the Senator is taking to heart and, like I said, she's been very vocal about it. And I'm writing down all your comments, just so you know, and we'll present them tomorrow up in Sacramento. I'll sign them up, so.
I, I have a question for you, it's like, it just dawned on me. I, I know, because I've done this before on another energy project, because I can't be working with Congressman, um, Calvert. Congress people, the public senators, have an ability to launch an investigation or inquiry into a department, right? And in this case, it was with Department of Energy, what purpose to it? Does, does the state legislature, the Senator, a sitting Senator, have the ability to initiate some kind of investigation with a state agency? That would specifically correct, or that specifically addresses the reasonableness, like, if Senator Valadares contacted the Public Utilities Commission formally and say, we believe that, oh, there's no time for it. So, but, and, and what we have to do under the Public Utilities Code, I'm sorry, rules of practice and procedure of the commission, is we have to initiate a conversation with Edison and we can confirm, to try to avoid it. So maybe we want to do that, and, and still go forward with that, hopefully have some happy news from Senator Valadares.
I, I think that's probably.
Shannon's here too, to hear what I'm concerned about.
I'm also thinking of some all of this movie.
Well, he can't do much about the P S P S, I think, but the transmission lines, absolutely, because that's a FERC issue. And so.
I know, we like, that's like, over loaded, so I can also understand, he's like, I have enough money.
I'm sorry, so there's something called the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and FERC, that's FERC. And under the Energy Policy Act, which was amended in two thousand and five, FERC has jurisdiction over transmission lines. And even though our transmission lines are controlled by the California system operator or CAISO, they, their tariff is still approved by the FERC. And that, a year back ago, we hold, I, I'm counsel, said, we're holding CAISO, we will be filing a complaint to FERC, do not provide supervision, and they did. So, because they have, the FERC will pound on that money, there's still tomorrow. So, so the FERC is, you know, overall the charge, California controls the transmission lines, and then the transmission operator just operated, and that would be Edison. And the transmission under California, Public Utilities definition, transmission is anything that operates over two hundred K V. Subtransmission is anything operates from fifty K V and two hundred K V, and distribution is anything under fifty. Now, FERC doesn't look at it in those ways, they have tests that they set up in the center, they can look at a system and say, oh, is that a transmission or distribution? There's two tests that they have, and then back to testing one for the next. And they buy this test and then they decide, okay, yes, FERC has jurisdiction over it, no FERC test. So there are some facilities that are less than two hundred K V that FERC has jurisdiction over just because of the way it's configured. So, but anyway, so that's what FERC is, sorry.
No, 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 I think it's.
I understand.
And I think it's really important for us to remember that we were shut off for three weeks in a row. I'm like Don, it was three to four days each week. I too went down to the community club to see what they were offering, it was hilarious, they're giving us wood and a blanket. And little snacks.
And, and then they started shutting it down there in California, we, here in San, uh, San Jose. So you went, no.
No, they didn't take no way to know.
Correct.
It has no wind.
And some people went to the back room, they had no toilets at their house.
Yeah, but we were allowed to the community club to get warm and use the restroom.
Yeah, and then, oh, sorry, go down.
Yeah, well, and then the relaxed, the ridiculous distribution of generator sales, but like, you know, I don't, some people that drove to Las Vegas, you'd buy.
You're planning, oh, do you have an email that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's all, it's all because, because during, during that time, you pooped. And so, you, several people drove to Las Vegas to get their, uh, their lawyers.
I, I need to know, I need to send that in, so it'll be part of the package.
Yeah, so.
Another thing they didn't do, um, my mom lost a lot of food. And for a while, we were doing the dry ice thing, but most place, eighty, way out around the device, and ninety bucks a pump, we were golden. I'm like, okay, how much food are we going to try and save it ninety dollars and come and go? So, I think, you know, okay, we're going to do this, the power comes back on break, and it doesn't provide for food out. Edison's not reimbursed for food.
They're required to. Well. They're supposed to try that.
Three different times.
Okay, so if you, okay, you can send that information to town, I always wind up people's names, right? That's part of the package, right? That they are supposed to.
With several people saying that, that they cannot care, I sent that all over next door in California.
Well, maybe, maybe something has changed, but when the first guidelines came out, they were supposed to pay for food. That was, you think this is twenty twenty?
I took it, bought it to my house, but my freezer, because I have a generator and have power-ish. Um, but a lot of first, you know, a lot of first stuff.
Didn't you, did you get, did you give an email, Edison said, we don't reimburse for that, or?
I left no response at all.
So, but you did ask them.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Would you share that, if you could follow that, town council goes, yeah, this is all part of the, this is all part of the competition. I wanted, I wanted lots of people to, I see, so. That would be great, and then to send that, so that'd be great, too. So, anyway, so maybe.
There's been commented, five years ago, when you lived over in Arundel State, um, there was a, a period of time within a month, you were off power for about fifteen days or so. And it was when the winds were only twenty-five, thirty miles an hour. And so, we documented all the times that power was shut off, and we've had regulations. We sent it back to them, and they, they were charged for just keeping the lines charged.
Wait, they charged you for electricity on the face?
Yes.
Oh, we, we, no, okay, I think you guys sent us the bill, I submitted it as part of our comments, I blocked everything out because they are, the PC, don't worry about it.
Yeah, we sent it to them, we sent a letter, all the documentation, something like that, and just saying, we'll get back to you, move back to you, like, and you say, they don't do any product. It was great.
Well, that's because they're just, you know, a big element, and with this little line split, we might, we can bite. Well, if you could send that. And I also want to say that, you know, when they were cutting power in 2019, everywhere, right? Uh, when there was no wind, so we submitted for counter discovery on Edison, and they came back with a discovery response. That said, we cut power, they enacted on the shovel circuit in particular, because we're not sure that it can withstand twenty-five mile an hour winds. Well, then I went, I got that, like, ten to one hundred ninety-five, they're required to maintain it, so to be able to stand, it's like seventy miles an hour, like, wind, okay? So, they can't even withstand twenty-five miles an hour, that means they violated other provisions of the code for not maintaining their equipment. So, then I had a spreadsheet listing all, all the links they've done on all the distribution polls.
Oh, what did you?
There was a forty thousand line spreadsheet, not kidding, but you know, those had a ordinary spreadsheet, you can find it, it's out pretty fast. They haven't done anything for decades, since fifty years ago, in, I mean, not sorry, in the fifties, so seventy years ago. A lot of activity became, got electricity only because of low location type in the forties. So, we were very late to get electricity, but a lot of artists, so they were building in the fifties, and they hadn't maintained it. So, this, it isn't just Jan, uh, the January event that this, they were reasonable, it's, we've shown this wind, wind matters, a day, every single time for the last, since 2019.
Oh, I remember we, we had to do all those, but we're hardening up the lines, they got a part like this. In the future, this won't happen, you'll be ready, it never happened, and they still shut them.
Oh, absolutely, so.
And we're on well, so you have the electricity, you have the water.
You have no toilets, you have nothing.
And then, compound of the worst.
Yeah.
Well, at the, at the Allen Council meeting in Arundel City, they brought some of their people from Edison. And so, you know, a lot of people were saying, we have horses, and so we need the water. And so, the representative was saying, we'll just coach her on the puzzle. And I'm saying, you don't understand that I'm coaching on a whale, we'll just turn on the puzzle. And it took them like three or four times for them to finally get it.
That's, not, the party's gonna be horrifying. So, I, so maybe, okay, I, I, I'll maybe push, I moved it behind two guys. Because I just know what you're thinking, I moved it up here. Check Edison and initiate a meeting for. Okay, you judge us, see to initiate a meeting for. Regarding, um, the unreasonableness, S C E. Yes, yes, that is the January. So, we're not going all in on, by the way, the complaint, but we're starting that process, first letting them, then see what. That's my question.
Okay. It's not everything. We have to give them this, and you said, you're letting them. Okay, I think that's just, I'm too.
And then, uh.
Just sort of, you know. Yeah, it's not, uh, we just talked about, sorry, you have, wait, before we get into any of this.
I think we should ask for an in-person meeting.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, they didn't give up your hospice presence of, that's a bit proud, but I'm not sure. All right, all the danger, I, I, all right, next up, it is happening for us.
It's happening.
Received a late notice that a, that a, that a situation, public, talking, to share some of the information, can come to let you know. But we did.
Yes, or yes, definitely, well, recently, yeah. So, in July, the act of town council received an email from, like, Supervisor Baranzos, staff at FERC, Supervisor Baranzos. Hey, asking for a meeting, you had to be in person meeting, had to be in the library at a certain date and time, to talk about, of, of idea that they have for the rehab. They actually had a rehab, you know, a little bit of rehab down there on roster, uh, that area. Um, and so, we, the only people who made the date and time were Jeremiah and I, so we showed up here, it was a Zoom meeting, it was really odd. But anyway, we were told that the county was planning on leasing that rehab facility to an organization called Happy Trails. So, it would only operate this summer, three months, and the rest of the year, it would only be used occasionally for, um, I guess they, they, term name is corporate treatment, stealing, corporate. You run out of space, you do, like, trust calls, or, all right. I've never been on one, but I've seen it before. So, that was what we were told, it's like, okay, you know, you can't, as long as, you know, they can't have PA system, there's people living down there, and, you know, and it seemed like it would be too bad, and the ball fields were secured, okay. Then, um, then the county member came back to us, and the developer came back to us. And then, in January, we get, after our meeting in January, in the day of, we get a note saying, hey, this is going to the board at the next board meeting, and we're, we're giving them the properties, click, like, no longer leased, right? And, um, you know, sorry, and it's like, they were like, you guys never came to talk to us. We couldn't take, there was no time to take a position, so we didn't comment on it, because nothing, we didn't have anything to put on. And then, um, well, we were told the developer would be reaching out to us. So, eventually, in February, if the developer did contact us and asked to come to a meeting, he said, okay, come to April, and they chose, and I said, and because I'm the correspondent secretary, I had an email, I said, you need to provide us with a site plan so we can post it on our website at least two weeks before, so that people can see what it is, what you're going to be doing. And, um, I, I don't think they responded. And then, uh, as, as three, two or three weeks ago, um, I think she contacted us, or maybe I contacted her, saying, hey, where's the site plan?
Uh, she reached out.
Did she?
They reached out and, and said their, said to me.
Yeah, but that's what, no, no, it was a presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a presentation.
No, no, we didn't write drunk, they were like, that's, but not, random, yeah.
Exactly.
And the list of all the, what's left, we didn't.
Exactly. Yeah, so they provided a presentation, so I think that's, and we need a site plan, because the presentation was not, you sort of got an idea of what it's going to be. And then, there was also information, the presentation was very tough. First of all, they were saying it's going to be for six hundred kids, that was nothing like what we were told to lock. Then they said that foster youth will be used for three months of the year, and the rest of the time, the other nine months, will be for, uh, run by a for-profit, for-profit private corporation that will be doing science camps for schools, okay? And, um, it is full-time, so that was very difficult, what we were told. And so, then, um, when, when we looked at the renderings, or the sort of whatever it was on the presentation, it looked like the entire site, which I don't know how to use this, maybe it was. So, it's a large, it's a large site, yeah, but like, nine percent of it was going to be built out, because the ball field was still there, right? So, what they're doing, they're leasing to C R U Sports for fifty years, and they have to pay, what, a hundred bucks a month, something like that, to use it? Um, yeah, so they're leasing it for, for money to C R U Sports, but the county gave the property to this, this, uh, nonprofit for free, and gave them, well, the total, total amount given was over six million dollars. County gave them links, plans, to build all their facilities, rebuild the well, rebuild the waste, but even plant, but also the little walls, I mean, many, 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 including, or rendering, sugar, pool, and all kinds of stuff. So, um, so, um, oh, so we asked again for a site plan, and then, when I saw how big the footprint is, email saying, well, we also said, because they, they said they're opening up, their presentation said they're opening up early 2026, which means they've already, and they've already done a lot, they've already started that, but there's been no site plan, who can be set up for it? So, I'm in the zoning code, well, youth, youth camps, youth summer camps are in allowed use on the A two zone, there's a site plan on you, but you got a site plan. Right, and they never, so they're, they're building without a site, they're doing like whatever else does. And on top of that, the entire property is in significant water damage. Yeah, we were charged with residential condition when the new zoning, sorry, when the new general plan came out, and he exempted from S C A review residential uses in the annual valley. And, and accessories, because that was, because they expanded the S C A to take up more thirty percent of our view, so it's a big deal. And so, we have that exemption, but this is not residential use, so this is stuff that's in the S C A. And if you call the S C A or it's a real worked on, like, twenty eighteen, the bottom line is that at a minimum, you have to give half your property away to a conservancy to develop anything in the S C A, that's what, that's what it says. So, I'm sitting here thinking, since I don't have a site plan, because I expected to see, it is part of the nature of conservancy or whatever, or cinematic maps or whatever, and this is where we develop, no, from the conceptual, the whole thing was developed. So, it's like, well, okay, so we really need a site plan, because I'm not going to guess from this, this thing anymore. And so, so, so that's a problem, and we did hear from, so we asked a site plan again, then we read from their biologist, or, I didn't see the email, but I just came in, and said, hey, I'm doing the, the, the biological transanalysis, but the report's not done. And so, then, the, the developer agent said, well, sent an email on Sunday saying, well, since the biologist is still working, maybe we could go to meet, and, you know, we're not, doesn't, the things we need to discuss then, that it's irrelevant if the biological analysis is done or not, because we're not talking about species, we're talking about the project. And so, so there's the S C A, this problem, there's a site plan, this problem, the problem. Another huge problem is, as I live in zoning code, education camps are not permitted use in the A, A one or A two zone, it's not allowed. So, their whole plan is based, so, so just so we're clear, we were told the primary use was this, not for foster care nonprofit, which is great, but that's not true. Nine months of the year, okay, this for-profit corporate entity, right? And the rest will be this, but it's not true. So, another problem is that, okay, the rehab closed down six years ago, right? So, there's no use on profit, so there's no grand father for that. You know, that rehab was set up, it was, that was on the youth campus, built in the thirties, and it was set up before these, like, these permits were required and all that other stuff. So, they were grandfathered, they didn't have R C P, but that's gone. So, I mean, I'm going to have to see people like that in S C A, because they do exist, right? So, they will have to go through the C P process for an S C A, and that's a discretionary process. But they're already constructing, and why do they want to start it up in six months? Wait, wait, my last, sorry, the other problem, sorry, the other problem was, and no. Right across the street is a thousand, where we know that you is a million gallons a day.
I'm not there, I'm there.
It's a thousand, yeah, because now they're, they've got all sections open, anyway. So, they already use a huge amount of water, and where they are looking, where the, this happens, like, in, that's looking, it's in the lowest end of our basin, you want to call it, it's not really basin, it's a river, but. So, they will never win out of one, they'll, they'll be obliged, exactly, so everybody else. So, another concern is, how much water is this facility getting used? Because it's not going to sustain this for rehab, which, you know, they used to march in our store at the July break, there was maybe a hundred and fifty people in our truck, in that, not six hundred, you know, and hoping all year round from, with, yeah, you know? So, that's true, and then, it was, it's actually, it's short, too, just popped out of my head. And so, the, they all remember, okay, so, um, I was looking into that after you mentioned it to me, and, uh, there's a board letter online for the supervisor's website, um, for January fourteenth, I believe, was when it was approved by those directors. And what bothered me was that they use the government, um, the California government code, it was two six, two two seven was the code, and it allows the county to, um, redistribute property or holdings that they are not using. And they can either, uh, give it to a public entity, or they can give it a public agency, or they can give it to a charitable organization, a non-profit. So, in, in giving it to the summer camp, Happy Trails, they did do that. The problem I have is that Happy Trails is not going to be for you, right? It's a necessary use to the primary use of the institute, that is a paid institute that makes twelve million dollars a year in profit. Yeah, they charge six hundred bucks, they have five hundred ninety-five bucks a day, it's a law, each kid for two nights and three days. So, what they kind of do, and it's, 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 it's run around the, the law. And, and to me, the, the fact that the, the institute is not permitted use on A two.
That's why I do it.
And, uh, so, I think, that just to me looks, I'm sorry, but county, it looks shady. It looks like you were trying to find a way to shoehorn this camp in, and you put it under the umbrella of a foster camp, and it just looks shady to me.
Let's go further, that would be a new occurrence. Okay, I came, county had a driver's, and four car owners said, want more facilities. According to the county, what they told us at that July meeting was, they asked all, all the agencies, and also they had no use for it, and they give it to somebody else. So, here we have somebody in our community, and they're thinking slash, we're smashing the gray, you know, terrible situation, and climate, however, I promise you, there are no lot of kids from that that will be at this camp. We will be bringing kids from other areas for the three months, and the other nine months, we bring people from all over the place, and, and, and to do this, with our own tax money paying for, like, remediation for a facility, that none of the community will get to do. In the face of asking numerous times for anything, whether it be a pool, a splash pad, we, we came to all this convenience to come up with, we keep.